And there'll be an offset.
All right.
Thank you.
It's perfect. Any other questions for Tom? All right, thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
You want me to stay up here for anything else on the next one?
Um, yeah, well, so the next item on the agenda is, is the American, is use of the American Rescue Plan funds, or some of the funds that we were allotted. We held a public hearing this evening at seven fifteen. I just want to point out that that public hearing was published in the River East News Bulletin on the, in the December seventeenth, twenty twenty-one issue, so that was properly noticed. And, and so both our finance director and our public works director are both here to, to discuss this. Tom, while you're up here, do you want to just speak to the board as far as, as far as the, what we're allowed to use the American Rescue Funds for, specifically with water and sewer? And then would you like to briefly mention how the road improvements restoration fits in as well?
Yeah, so one of the main, there's a few tier levels of things that are allowable, which I don't, didn't bring those all with me, but of the, of the water and sewer, water and sewer is one of the main components in the infrastructure to the water and sewer. And so that was, I think that was where, as well as we have a significant need within the town to continually enhance and improve our water and sewer infrastructure, I believe that was where it was determined that it was a very positive use of the funding, as it was a very specific driven amount there. And the, what with the discussions with the public works director, there is also generally there's road restoration that's involved, and this, there probably will be some improvements to the roadway, so we want to, we want to try to a little, try to isolate it a little bit to show that there was other funding for possibly road improvement and road restoration, and that was going to be a use of some of the ARPA money as well. So, infrastructure for the water and sewer, some road restoration as well. So we wanted to show that and be apparent in that, and that's where in the, in the resolution it kind of explains that breakout a little bit. There, you know, we didn't break it out where it was specific money values. It's just, it's, this is the usage and as, as the bids come in, that's where we're anticipating those to come from. The, what was the other part of your question, or did I answer it?
Well, I think you did, just as far as, you know, how we know that water and sewer are allotted uses of ARPA, but I don't know, did you want to touch upon how the road is?
Well, the road, so we have the, we had, during the budget cycle, we had set aside, or we had allocated money utilization for the body cameras, a hundred eighty-four thousand of that, and then hopefully another thirty or so thousand that we get reimbursed by a state grant. Hopefully it flips the other way and is higher state grant, but to make the authorization, be it the appropriate numbers, it was a two fourteen authorization, therefore we utilize around thirty thousand of the state grant anticipation and a hundred eighty-four. So there's a possibility if somehow that state grant doesn't come in, there'd be a thirty thousand additional usage possibly of the ARPA funds there, but, and then there was around, I think, a thirty-seven thousand that was budgeted in the park, in the parks and rec as a revenue loss situation. Those, all those components, we had a calculation done, and it appeared that there was enough revenue loss to cover the, the, the body cams, the amounts for the parks and rec, and then in addition, the hundred and fifty would definitely be something that probably would be covered by the amount of revenue loss that was in this calculation that we had completed. So those were the reasons, those were the rationalizations, and just with the ARPA funds, we're trying to be, one of the things they want you to be is transparent of what you're utilizing for, that's why they had the public hearing to go over it, to allow people to have input into the matter, and, you know, y'all did that. And now we're to the point of saying, okay, the public hearing took place, those discussions that were handled, now does this seem like a viable use of the funding? And this will kind of give us the authorization to then move that process forward.
Thank, thank you, Tom. Anybody have any questions?
I have just one question. Tom, could you just run through the, the general rescue fund dollars that are, we've gone through, what are, we anticipate coming, additional funds, funds that will be available in the rescue fund? Could you, do you have that number?
I didn't, I didn't bring that with me.
Are you saying like what we have received and what do we anticipate receiving next June? What have we already received and what are we anticipating receiving?
Yeah, I don't have that number off the top of my head. I can ballpark it. I want to say we're at one point three seven million that we received. We, you know, we take out about the thirty, I want to say the thirty-seven was possibly for park and rec, whether we decide to use it for that. And we have to make that decision as we go on through the year if it's needed. A hundred eighty-four would be for the, the police body cams that was allocated. This would be about one one. The difference is unaccounted for at this current time, as we want to, we want to get through the body cam acquisition to make sure that we do or do not need, when I say unaccounted for, I mean unallocated, we haven't unallocated those amounts. But this is that first segment. Then when the next segment comes in, you'll be able to, you know, work through the process again to allocate those other funds. If we get through the, these, some of these projects now, and, and we determine the use of the differential, then we can do that, but I think that we're, we're trying to make sure that we were able to complete the, the projects at hand and leave a reasonable amount of funding if there was needed to be more funding utilized for the projects that were analyzed at first.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you, Tom. All right. Bob, do you want to come up and?
Sure, I can just do.
Oh, yeah.
Is there any question on what we tried to put together?
So I did a, well. So if Hernandez asked for a PowerPoint presentation, if we, if I could do that, I tried to put one together for you all to just briefly go over, you know, what we're thinking as far as infrastructure improvements that are greatly needed in town, they have been for many, many years. We have to continue to invest in our water and sewer, which is critical for everyone that uses it, as well as all our critical facilities in town that everyone uses that may not be on our water and sewer system, fire protection as well, everything is included. So basically, the one point one million, as you go through this, there's numbers in there, it's for six hundred and four hundred thousand, but as we got closer to the ball here, we, we decided that, you know, the one point one is a closer number, because there's that hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty thousand dollar number for the restoration of the road surface after you do work. And it's pretty aggressive, and we certainly want to make repairs of infrastructure under the ground before we try to make repairs, especially for old infrastructure, that being water or sewer, under the road so that we can do a final restoration of that road, and it could be a twenty to thirty-year road hopefully as a benefit. So that's my thinking, that's my thinking as far as engineering improvements, trying to get it one and done, and, and move on to another project so we don't have to go back. So as we go to the second screen here, our water infrastructure improvements in the range of six hundred are requested to replace the water main and service connections along Russell Avenue, and make new connection to Main Street. Many people are unaware that the existing water main, which is over or close to a hundred years old, it ends at Co. Avenue, so it doesn't make it to Main Street, which is pretty, it's not good for many things. One of those is if you have failures in the area, you can't redirect water so that less people are affected. Number two is fire protection. You certainly want to be able to get the volume of water in many directions to the area that you need. So by connecting to Main Street's going to create a more of a loop for that particular area, and it's greatly, it's a great improvement to do so. That's included in this proposal. The distribution, like I said, is, is close to a hundred years old, it's old, best a cement pipe, so it's one of the first styles of pipes that was put into Portland. There's been multiple failures in that area over the years, lots of them during winter operations, which has been, which has delayed restoration and put a lot of tax on our departments trying to get them done in inclement weather while trying to take care of the roads. The current mains, main stops, like I said, at Co. Avenue, so we want to increase that loop, and our fire protection in the area is reduced, not only because of the size of the old main, its integrity, which is pretty critical when we flow a lot of water on an old pipe, we have a lot of issues with that, and that connection to Main Street. So on the next slide is just a few pictures, and it shows the example of, you know, an average, there you go. So that's on a nice sunny summer day, and that's about the least amount of damage that's done when we have to fix a water main. And it's, it's a big deal, it takes a lot of people, and it's a big inconvenience for a lot of our ser, our customers. So we try to put as many people on it, it's very costly, not only the repairs of the material, but costly, could be dangerous at times depending on the, the weather, so this is a, this is a typical, or not typical, but it's an unfortunate failure that we had over the past few years. And the picture on the right, for those who've never seen what's under the ground, is a picture of one of our old pipes. And as you could see, it's, it's got connections that go off into different areas, and, and valves that are, that are in this picture here that are extremely old as well, some clamping connections to it, are connections that, you know, are bell connections they're called, where pipes go into other pipes that start to fail and leak, even in the bell issues where the, the pipe doesn't fail, so. Those are some of the things that, you know, we're faced with every day. Next slide. So basically, the benefits to funding will assist our work to continue to remove that particular type of pipe. That's something that the Department of Public Health would like to see. So many feet per year moved, which it's very difficult to get to the number of feet that they'd love to see removed. We probably still have eight to ten thousand feet of this type of pipe, especially in our downtown area, which is our oldest. So we want to try to continue to make those repairs, we have over the years, with funding that's been provided by the taxpayers and the board, and we want to continue that. The new water, the water main will be an eight-inch ductile iron pipe, much more stable, increase the efficiency in the area for not only the reliability of the customers, but by reducing the loss of water due to failures. That's big. We pay for every gallon that flows out of the ground, and, you know, we've had some breaks that, especially in our high-pressure areas, that we lose hundreds of thousands of gallons of water before we can even get to it and make those repairs. So it's going to overall be a big reduction in the overall cost to the town by making these repairs, as we continue to do on many other roads. The new connection to Main Street I talked about runs from Co. Avenue main, and that's going to be provide an additional loop, which gives us much more efficiency for the area as well as fire protection ability, and we're hoping that we'll reclaim that road and after, and repave it so it becomes a much more safe surface and durable surface over that infrastructure. So that's usually the, the overall plan that we try to do, and we're looking to make, Spring Street's a perfect example, although that had a lot of other work that was needed as we make those improvements. So that's just a quick synopsis of the water side. Next slide talks a little bit about sewer. Sewers vary just as critical as water. We, we flow numbers that people, most people would never imagine as far as wastewater. The current pump station is our goal. Co. Avenue was built in nineteen, early nineteen seventies, it consisted of a three-level building, and had, it now does, a three-level building, it has some, had some improvements made in nineteen ninety when it actually flooded. We had a flood, it's in an area, so that particular building was raised to take the electronics, most of those above the flood plain, but we still have that really deep lower level. You should all try to take a visit, you probably want, don't want to go down that deep in the ground, but that's where most of the work is done. It's in very poor condition, the piping on the lower level, it's very old. It goes, some of the piping was original even when, even before nineteen ninety, that the facility was retro'd after the flood. So we're looking to make, you know, many improvements in that area. It, it currently has two fifteen-horse dry pit submergeable pumps, those are the pumps that move the product, and it has, it's all elevation. You know, a pump house is because of elevation, it's where the gravity stops, and we have to pump our wastewater to a different height so that gravity can take over again, and we currently have three of those in town at three different locations to make our wastewater for those who are connected to move in the direction of the main plant, which is down along the river, Indian Hill Avenue and Riverside, or River View right down in that area. So those two stations are much newer than this. Along with that, the some pumps, the ventilation fans that are down in the, in the lower section there, level switches, I, I can go on and on with the electronics, they're outdated, they're old, they're all experiencing corrosion because they're in an atmosphere where we're leaking. That lower chamber of the Co. Avenue pump station, around those pipes that are coming through the walls, has infiltration of water. It's just because of their age, so we're looking to make improvements there, dry that area out so we can have some longevity, not only on the pumps, and I'll show you pictures, but on the control units, it's so important. The other issue there that we're looking at is the current fuel or LP, it's a propane, it heats the building as, as well as provides fuel for our emergency generator, which we have to have, these pumps have to run at all times. We lose a lot of power here in town, it's getting better, but these facilities get hit, they're in those areas that seem to, you know, we have power losses, water as well as sewer, so we have good systems there, but we certainly need to, you know, power them. The tank is underground, it doesn't meet current code, and as you'll see from one of my pictures, the top of it floods with water, we have to pump it off to even see the valves and fill it. It's currently out of date, it's not to code, so we want to bring that tank up, put it in a, in a vessel on top, I'll talk a little bit about that on the next slide. So you'll see some pictures here, there's where your water's coming through the wall on the lower level, that's a valve, our pump is off to the side. This is some of the corrosion that just the moisture in the area below there is causing that support to one of the pumps. So we're, you know, we're experiencing a lot of, a lot of issues there. Next slide. There's your, top of your propane tank area that we consist to work on. We do have a vendor, we actually lease that, they haven't been too good about coming up with a solution for that, so, you know, this solution is to actually own our own, and, and, you know, not be in a leasing program, and then we have some buying power as well to get our fuel when you do that, so. That's the hatch that goes down into it, that's not even really a hatch that falls into any type of code, it's in a cement vault, so. Next slide. So the overall benefits for sewer are just as important. I mean, you know, we, it improves and maintains the pump station's critical operation, it is critical, our wastewater system and upgrades through the station. I didn't hit on it before, but this station pumps a hundred and sixty-five thousand gallons of wastewater a day. And if it doesn't, it's eight thousand dollars a week for a bypass pump until we can get something fixed. And we have redundant pumps, but they're both the same age, and they're both in great need to be replaced. So, you know, we struggle with that, things, things are good now, but, you know, there, it's critical to get these done, and this funding is a great opportunity to provide some updates on that. Of this, the hundred and sixty-five thousand, that, that makes up about thirty-five percent of the total, four hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day that we treat, we receive and treat at the main plant. So, I mean, there's quite a bit of flow of wastewater into our system that we have to manage every day. We'll make that by increasing, you know, and, and changing the influent pumps, electrical infrastructure, maybe having some shelf parts and, and things that we've talked about, reducing the moisture and corrosion, electrical components by, you know, repairing those areas around the suction pipes. All of this on the water and the sewer side was talked about in two thousand sixteen in the Time Bond Report, so it's nothing new to us. This is an opportunity with, you know, funding's difficult, but this is an opportunity where they've made out of those three or four categories, water and sewer infrastructure was one of the, the top picks for this funding. So these are the two areas that we think that are going to make the best improvement right now based on, you know, what we have on our plate as far as what needs to be done. Johnny?
Bob, you mentioned at the last meeting, the map you have in your office with the pushpins and all the, all the problems that you've had. Is this the biggest pushpin area on that map we're talking about?
Yeah, there's, I, I haven't, you know, there's pushpins in there from my day, so all the pushpins, if anybody's visited my office, or since I started in two thousand eighteen, and I needed to get a new box of pushpins. So there are a few there for me, and I'll tell you from the past director, there are many there that didn't get pushpinned. But, you know, we have issues in all those areas. You know, we've had a couple of issues on Brizo Drive, and, you know, all that area is old, so those are all on our plans to eventually upgrade and get to as funding is available. As funding is available. You have ACP pipe in that, we call that the Proud Acres area, that still has that, there's still a loop of ACP up off of High Street, which is the Dogwood area and Hilltop, all those things are all on our list. And it's all based on age and, and, and the ability, and how much it's going to take to do those repairs. We just made a huge repair down on Brownstone Avenue, something that was more critical than this. Obviously, that broke every Christmas Eve, every New Year's Day, every, I mean, and, you know, our commercial businesses down there took a brunt. And we were able to do really good work down there, we're on that new water main now, and we made those great improvements, and as we just continue to do it, you know, we're going to, we're going to be a little more efficient and reliable. We're certainly going to reduce our loss in water, that's for sure.
And I would think that with resolving some of these problems, these, these unexpected breaks, I would think it must hit your overtime budget to a certain extent, too.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you can see some of the numbers now, we have the shared departments, and we do that the best we can, and we're lucky to be able to do that. We have a very small water department, they certainly couldn't handle any failure themselves. They can, you know, they're, they're struggling just to do their daily activity, two people in a water department is basically unheard of. So our highway department and other divisions, sewer, grounds, they're all on the list to help, but that does affect that, it always does. And there's no short term, no matter which way we luck at to make a repair. By the time you get your call before you dig in, you find the location, you're pumping it off, you're, you know, setting up your staging and your safety equipment, you know, most of these water main breaks are a minimum of six to eight hours, some of them go to days. I mean, last, the day before, two days before Christmas Eve last year, we were out on one for two days. And they just go, you get great crews, the town, I mean, I can't say enough about the guys that work for us.
We're very lucky as a guy.
We're very lucky, and, you know, things are difficult now, too. I mean, we're trying to stay healthy, and they're trying to, this is not the season to be not healthy, we need everybody in trucks, so. But, you know, as we make these improvements, that limit, you know, that, that helps us there, too, and it gives them more time to do other things.
Thanks, appreciate the help.
With the repaving of the road afterwards, that's going to be curb to curb from one end to the other?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because basically we would want to restore anywhere that we did construction about, so that, that would be from Middle Sixth Avenue extension to Main Street.
Okay.
That's correct, yeah. Yep. And all that is, you know, it's all based on escalation and price, and things are changing now, so that's why we had a great discussion, I had a good discussion with Ryan and Tom, and they put a lot of work into that, and they redirect me a lot of times, and, you know, we want to make sure that we have enough to do what we want to do correctly the first time. So you never know, you have to have some contingency there to see where you're going to be. You could be in a good market, or you could be in a really hard market when you go out to bid and get these things done, so.
One more thing, as you said about doing it once, how is the sewer main on that road?
It's good, yeah, I mean, you know, sewer's a little different, you know, we're inspecting sewer each year, we do cleaning, which is a good thing, and sewer's not under pressure. So, you know, it flows, and you can look at cameras and things, so that makes a big difference. Although the way it was installed, the road, the activity on the road, you know, they can, that can hamper those things, but, yeah, we're, we feel that the sewer's in good shape there.
Okay.
You know, for now.
Are these pump houses automated at all? By meaning like, do you get an alarm emailed to you, or do you have a daily checks on them?
Well, it's daily, twice a day.
Twice a day.
Our, the staff, which is, we have a lab technician that stays in the lab all day because of the number of tests that he has to do, and then the supervisor and his partner are the ones that do all that work every day. So they have to go to every site, like, they have to manually take information down, gallons, and, you know, the stuff is off the screen, they also do it in paper form, too, and record it every day.
Is that time-consuming for them?
It's very time-consuming, yeah, so the SCADA system.
Think about automating it?
We are, we, so we have some funding for water with SCADA, we're going through that now, trying to narrow it in. Once we get that plan in place for water, we hope to be able to fund and tap into that for sewer.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, SCADA, that's, you know, we funded it about a year and a half ago, we're trying to get around the corner with COVID, we didn't, you know, but I have some really good estimates in now, we're trying to pin it down to the correct scope and get the water side started, and a very basic system, and then we can add on. The system for, the SCADA system for sewer is a lot bigger, there's a lot more stuff to, to do, but, yeah, we need to take that out, too, absolutely. Put technology in and take manpower out.
Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Yes, I, I could. Resolution from the Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, dated January fifth, twenty twenty-two. American Rescue Plan Funds, Water and Sewer Infrastructure and Road Improvements Restoration. Whereas the Town of Portland is in receipt of American Rescue Plan Funds, and whereas one of the main approved uses of the ARPA funds is to make improvements to water and sewer infrastructure, and whereas the town has identified water and sewer infrastructure needs within its five-year capital plan that far exceed one million dollars, and whereas the town needs to restore and improve the road surface above the utilities, and whereas the current estimate of these road improvements and restoration is one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Portland hereby approves one point one million dollars for critical water and sewer infrastructure improvements and with related road improvements and restorations.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Sean seconded. All right, any discussion from the board? Move to the question, all those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion passes. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you very much.
Actually, I have one question for Bob before we go. What is the timeframe for all that to be completed? Like, is it a, I'm not, you know, hold, is it a three-month job, is it a six-month job?
Well, the, you know, the, the run of that is usually takes long. It's the engineering, surveying, work that needs to be done. It doesn't seem to be too bad, we've looked at all that, there's some existing things that we can work off of, but it's the bidding and things that we have to do because it's this type of money, it's federal money, and sometimes that takes a little longer. Once that gets out, we hope to take advantage of that, get on this right away, so we can take advantage of trying to get ahead of people's schedule, that they build that, which sometimes ends up being good pricing, and then after, once it's awarded, it's all based on schedule. I expect that job to take up to maybe three weeks to a month on the Brownstone Avenue, right into that area, you know, finish taping and things like that, fall into a schedule after, where they, you know, they repair the trench and pave that temporarily, then they come in and do the restoration on the road.
Okay.
You never know.
Definitely.
Definitely. All right, ready to move on? The next item on the agenda is the appointment of the architectural firm. Dave, do we have either Lou Pair or do we have Charles?
Louis.
Louis, does he want to address the board about the architectural firm? There's Charles. Hey, Charles.
Hello, Rowan. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yep, we can hear you.
Dave, I see, I see Lou is here and also on Dave Harper is here and Dave's on that, maybe he will, if Dave wanted to. We could certainly, we can both answer questions, but. Lou, do you wanna, wanna quarterback this one or do you want me to say a few things?
We gotta hear him.
We can't hear you, Lou. You're on mute, Lou.
All right.
There you go.
Yeah, okay, well, I'll, I'll talk a little and then if I miss something, you can fill them in. So what we're looking at is that we have a facilities committee and we've had once a month. We're in the process of securing an architectural firm to give us a consulting direction on how to move forward with the schools that we have and whether we repurpose, whether we do a combination of repurposing and adding on or whether we remodel, all the different things that we need some finite information from a consultant before we can go forward. So we're at the point where we've kinda discussed what the options are, at least what we think the options are. The consultant, I'm sure, can give us more information about what they've done in other communities and then move forward with a master plan that we will present to the Board of Ed and the Board of Selectmen. The goal is in June. If we can do that by June, then we will do it. Covid has caused some problems lately and so we have a meeting scheduled for Monday. I'm hoping we have that in mind, you know, Monday, but they do. So that's where we are so far. We interviewed four different groups, architectural firms, and we've been at our fee for those, for two of the four firms. And we've gotten back a, two quotes and one quote is that the lowest bid and is a very reputable, reputable company. And so we're hoping that maybe we can move forward with this company. So our proposal tonight, or our resolution, is to ask you for permission to go forward with this, with this resolution. So that's all I have to say. Charles, if you wanna, in case I miss something, if you wanna fill them in, I don't need anything else.
Sure, I, I can just maybe give you a, a brief overview of how we ended up here tonight. So I, I would, I'll, I'll be quick, but I wanna take us back to the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year during the glory days pre-pandemic. They didn't have the pandemic started in nineteen twenty. Our Board of Education and our, our Homer Superintendent had a company come in and take a look at our five schools and help us understand what some of the capital needs were in the schools in terms of boilers and roofs and parking lots and, you know, code upgrades and, and all the things that need to be done to, you know, keep our schools in good working order. That company was called Sightlines and from the Sightlines report, we learned that over the next ten years, we can anticipate about twenty-eight million dollars worth of upkeep that needs to be done in, across the five schools. So the Board was, was interested and happy to receive that information as certainly it's important for us to use that to, you know, form our thinking about strategic plan and capital improvements. Last year, at the beginning of the year, we had a, an ad hoc committee get together and start discussing, well, you know, hey, before we just go and spend twenty-eight million dollars or request twenty-eight million dollars on, on five buildings, we should put together a plan. We, we should design a five to ten-year strategic plan and then prioritize the different projects that we need to prioritize over that ten-year period of time. That committee did some excellent work and it led to us coming to the Board of Selectmen in the spring of last year and asking you all to formalize that committee. So last spring, the Board of Selectmen formalized the work of our committee. It is now a, a Board of Selectmen committee that, who is the chair of and that I'm on. And we got some really high-quality representatives on that committee who are experienced in a wide variety of guilds and bring the education. I've had some people on that committee who are in that, you know, construction guild in the industry. And we've been talking all year about, so what is our vision for the schools for the next, again, ten years? It's a long period of time. We're talking about pretty substantial investments of funds. We should be strategic about it. We've reached a point now where we really need the services of a professional company to come in and really help us be able to dot our i's and cross our t's. There's lots of questions we have about state reimbursement and funding and what projects we should prioritize and what the public schools are gonna look like in ten years from now. So part of the resolution said from the Board of Selectmen that we could retain the services of a firm, of an architecture firm to help us do this work, but we would need to come back to the, both the Board of Education and the Board of Selectmen and ask for your blessings to retain the services of that firm, the firm. Last night, the Portland Board of Education worked unanimously for us to move forward with the Friar Architecture firm and we're here to ask you for your similar blessings so that we could, we could obtain the services of this firm to help us again design a five to ten-year modernization plan that we could present to you in June. So the way we're gonna pay for this is that I heard you talking tonight about how you are going to apply your rescue funds that you received from the federal government in the context of the pandemic. The schools, too, received funds from the federal government as part of the rescue plan. Those funds are called ESSPR funds for us. And one of the approved reasons for using those funds would be if the use of those funds leads to improve air handling and HVAC systems in schools. Because as we know, a, a virus is less likely to spread in air that is well, flowing well and, and, you know, effectively conditioned and filtered. Certainly, right now, our air handling in, in our, many of our classrooms consists of a fan in the window. We think we can do better than that. And when we wrote the grant for our ESSPR funds, we asked for permission that if we allocated a portion of those funds to retain the services of a firm that could help us design a plan that would eventually lead to the improvement of air quality in our schools, if that's something that would be acceptable. And that is something that's acceptable, so we would like to apply seventy, seventy-four thousand dollars of those funds to retain the services of Friar Architecture, help us come in and design a five to ten-year modernization plan for our schools.
Thank you, Charles. Does anyone have any questions?
I'll move the resolution if everybody's.
I, I just have one question. Out of the firms that you interviewed, is this the preferred firm?
Yes, so we, we submitted a request for qualifications and we had six firms reply with the request for qualifications. Our committee got together and we selected from the, the six who replied to the RFQ, four firms. We had the four firms come, come in and present to us. From those four firms, we selected two that we thought were, were particularly outstanding and then to those two, we asked for a request for proposal. And then of those two, the one that we're presenting to tonight provided us a bid that was about twenty thousand dollars lower than the other firm. Both of the, the two firms, we thought were, were more than capable of, of doing the work we're looking to do. I have checked references on Friar Architecture firm and I've heard back nothing but glowing reviews from everybody who's used them for similar purposes.
Thank you, Charles. Thank you, Lou. All right.
I'll move the resolution and I'll read the resolution. A resolution, Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, dated January fifth, twenty twenty-two. Contract agreement with Friar Architecture. Resolved that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Portland hereby appoints the firm Friar Architecture of twenty-one Talcott Knatch Road, Farmington, Connecticut, zero six zero three two for the purpose of providing architectural consulting services for the Portland Public Schools' Modernization Master Plan. Total contract amount prior to any required change orders is approximately seventy-four thousand five hundred dollars. And be it further resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby authorizes Ryan J. Curly for a selectman and/or his designee Superintendent of Schools, Charles Britton, to sign and execute any required documents.
I'll second that.
Sean seconds. Thank you, Sean. Any discussion on this? Move to the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion passes. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, the next item on the agenda tonight is, there was a request made. I copied the Board of Selectmen members on my reply to Dan Bertram regarding a, a request for a one-month extension to the amended and restated agreement to fix assessment on real property of Brainerd Place. Oh, and Dan is here this evening. Thank you, Dan, for joining us. And I guess I'll, I'll let you speak to this. Every, the board is aware of, of your request and so maybe you could give us an update on, on where we're at with the project.
Yeah, so we're, we're moving forward. That part's good. It's just very slow because of all the COVID issues, holidays, you name it. We have a bond posted before the end of the month. We had two other December deliverables. One was the filing of the building permit for Building E. Foundation permit's already been submitted, but the foundation, the, the rest of the building is to be submitted. We had a wave of COVID go through Marco Constructors, so they're deliverable on internal comments, which don't have a material impact, I don't think, but we have to run the process first on hermit docks as they already stand. Had gone from mid-December to the late December to the first thing in January to sometime next week as of today's meetings, but we're making progress. The short version on that is we think that we'll be filed by the end of this month and we'll, you know, it would, these are part of that. And at the time, we'll pick up the foundation permit for Building E. That can now be done or, or released by the town because of the host of bond that was posted for, I think, a million six and change. And that, that evidence was sent to the Selectmen. Another thing is tied to the closing of the financing and that's the consolidation of, that ties to the consolidation of parcels. So I'd love to tell you that everything's just ducking and moving along, but, you know, it's, it's almost comically bad how many people have been out over the last bit with COVID. And so thankfully, no one's gotten sick on our side in any way that is quite threatening, but it's simply incredibly disruptive. So we'll stay on it. I think this is a sufficient thing for the Board to consider. I don't need any action on it tonight. I mean, come back in two weeks, we'll give some more updates. I know that one of the job supers met with the town this morning and went through certain parameters on, and, and Ryan, you might be able to speak that better than I can, just because I've been in back-to-back meetings since then and pulling out kind of piecemeal input on it, but as I understand it, there have just been procedural discussions about what's needed for utility disconnects in order to knock down some of the buildings on Perry. But all that's going on, they're completing the abatement work on the second chunk of houses, too, and, and structures to be demoed. So we're, we're just moving a little slowly, but we're moving and things are getting going, so. Basically, my update. And Happy New Year, by the way.
Happy New Year. So in, in your email, Dan, I just wanna, your request was, was for a one-month extension which would push sections eight point two and eight point six.
Yeah, it's those two parameters. The other parameters that have later dates in two thousand twenty-two, you know, the modify, I think those are all on track.
So are you saying tonight that you still plan on, on completing eight point two, the, the building permit and the merger of the parcels by the end of, of the month?
That's the plan. Everybody's telling me they can do it, but they've been telling me different things, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna overstate it, but I believe that that's all very deliverable. That's what I wrote in the email. That's what I think can happen. But don't shoot me if I show up and tell you I need another week on something, but, you know, the reality is the machine's running and we're getting this job going, so. The, I, the request is for a thirty-day extension and I believe that we will be able to work with that just fine.
Does anyone have any questions?
No, so we could, we can just discuss this further and then we could table it for the next meeting?
Yeah, I don't want any action item or anything tonight. I just wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, and I, and I just got a, a message that was on the agenda tonight, so I just popped in, but I
All right.
I don't have more than that to share.
Maybe by, in two weeks, maybe you'll have a little more information about how far along you are and be better news and then we won't even have to come to this.
And I think you'll all see a little more in the next two weeks in terms of what even goes on in the field and stuff. So I, I'm grateful coming back in two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, but, yeah, we'll discuss and we'll get back to it in two weeks.
Thank you, Dan. That's, that's it, I guess.
All right, all right, so have a good couple of weeks. I'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we will move on from that. Does anybody have any comments or anything? Any questions? Okay. All right, so the next item is the Portland Agricultural Fair for two thousand twenty-two. I know we have some members of the Fair Association that are, that are here today. I believe Don Bascom's here, the president. And you, Don, you wanted to maybe go over what, what the plans for the fair entail. I, I think we can pull up, Dave, can we pull up a map of the properties so that the board can? Yeah, perfect.
Okay, number one. Monday, when I got a copy of this resolution, first thing I said was, hallelujah, finally we're moving ahead, okay? There have been a lot of changes and I know there's a lot of you have not been part of the original approach to this, but I would like to thank everybody for their efforts. I get asked a lot about, is the fair coming back? If the fair comes back, where is it going to be? And in the last couple of months, the best that I could say is hopefully it's coming back and we're working on it. And fortunately, there've been a lot of people jumping in, so we've worked through a, a lot of the issues. So I'm here, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If you would like, I can go back from to the beginning and give you a history, but I don't know if you wanna waste time doing that. It's up to you.
Don, I just had one question.
Sure.
It was part of the meeting that we had down at the Riverfront. And one of the issues was whether we were gonna tear up or cut down any of the trees near the, you know, near one of the structures there. And what was the resolution? I didn't see that. That was kind of a bone of contention and I just wasn't sure how that got resolved.
What happened with that? We went back and forth, the quorum, I think everybody is aware, did not want us cutting any trees down out behind the pavilion. Okay, so we, Fran Dwyer, he's here tonight. He and I went down there and we walked around. We came up with a plan. We thought that, that we could take the, where the foot. that we could take the, uh, where the pavilion is here, this road that goes right up through the park. We thought that if we cleared on both sides of the road, back to the river, and over, we had seventy feet, we could take our big tents, hundred-foot tents, and run them along, along the, uh, the roadway. Jim Tripp proposed that he didn't come on us. He said we were getting too close to his trails that were going up, up and back there. So, we remodified again, and, uh, we painted, uh, this parcel of, of trees and brush right in here. Um, we said that we might be able to take and squeeze all three tents into there, okay? That's where it ended, okay? What was missing from this big picture was that nobody was addressing the fact that the midway had to go somewhere, okay? So, what was needed, if you can move the screen out back down here where the three parcels that the town bought, um, the par. No more. No more.
If you could zoom out a little a minute.
No more.
There you go.
Right here. So, a question came in. The plan was to put the midway on two-twenty-two and two-thirty, which is right here, okay? We wouldn't use it all up, there would still would be some space for vendor parking, okay? The way we left it, that was a big if. And then on Monday, when we got this, when we got the resolution, I said, "Wow, we, they've given us permission to use that parcel there." And then Ryan calls me yesterday, and, um, I go down there and we had a conversation with Amy Valencourt again, okay? And, and by the way, Amy's been fantastic with this. She has been helpful, great person, okay? So what it comes down to, and. I'll give these to you if you want to pass them around to everybody. Amy says to me, "What are you going to do with the midway? Are they going to stake any of the rides?" Because the issue was, this is going to be all capped when it's cleaned up and finished. Is staking going to dig it up because we can't do that? And I said, "The only ride that I know of would be the Ring of Fire," which is a big ride, and he does stake it down. So, Amy's suggestion was this. She said, "Draw up this aerial map that I just gave you." And she's going to take it, she's meeting with Deep tomorrow. And she's going to take that and she's going to run these questions by Deep. The big thing was, we want to make sure that they understand this is a weekend fair, that's it. This is not something that's happening around the clock year-round. So, she's going to run that by him and then get back to me and let me know what the answer is to that. I'm pretty sure the answer is going to be yes, okay? I don't think they're going to oppose putting the midway there, okay? If that happens, on your map, you see there's a section that says remove fence? If we take out the section of fence right there, there's going to come a plan now that's going to make everybody happy, okay? We won't cut down trees in the back of the pavilion. We'll move the tents back up into here. We'll only start it up right here. So, the two tents, two big tents will go up here. Truck will now, will start down here, will run towards the fence, and where that fence is right there, when they're done pulling, they will drive through the fence and park down on two-forty-eight, which will be done, cleared, and will allow parking. So, the pickup trucks will just go down there and park. Midway will stay here. We now gain vendor parking up on top. We now gain vendor parking back here. We were going to lose our helicopter. We won't lose the helicopter now. So, this is the best plan for the fair as long as Deep says the midway can go there.
Do we have any issues with the old Coast Guard station?
That was my question.
You'll be going across.
That's privately owned, right?
Yes. It's, my understanding is that's a right-of-way, so we can cross over it, okay? We're not going down onto his property, just crossing over the driveway.
I don't know if you can cross that direction, though. Isn't, can we cross that direction now?
I always thought that that's a right-of-way. We gave it to him, the town did.
But is that pole area going to go right across his right-of-way?
No, no. The pole itself will end up in here. The trucks will discharge and drive through and down to the top. And the new truck, anybody sitting down here waiting to pull, will pull back off of two fence, hook up to the pole.
Has anyone spoken with the owner of that property? I mean, this seems like a good plan, right? It seems like it solves a couple of things.
Now, nobody's spoken to him about it, um, the reason is because this resolution, like I said, Monday, and I just talked with Amy, and this just got given to her yesterday, so I'll wait to hear what her word is back. If, if it comes back and it says that, no, you can't put the midway down here, this is a done deal. The fair is not going to move.
So, um, just based on our conversations with Amy yesterday, though, she, she did bring up a couple of points regarding the two-two-two and two-thirty Brownstone Ave. Um, it, it sounded more, it sounded more complicated with Deep than just a verbal, is this, is this okay? We want to do this. Amy was talking about the town, uh, and basically hiring Ty and Bond to create a, uh, a, uh, plan as far as what the soil disturbance would be for those two properties, which she did say would be, um, a cost to the town as far as time, uh, to create that, that plan, and then to, uh, present that to Deep. I mean, that is what she said on the call yesterday.
I didn't get that part of it. I heard she, she was going to. Present to Deep the fact that yes, midway is going there, and yes, they probably would stake some of the rides.
She did say, I mean, I wrote it down.
She's gone to them anyway. She said she had a meeting with them on Thursday anyway. So, I, I don't know about anything else. There's nothing else. When we move in here, this will be completed, it will be capped.
So, I mean, all I'm saying is my, my concern is, um, is just with the approval, getting the approval from Deep. There, just, I want the board to be aware that there may be a, a cost to that, um, in order to get that from the, the.
I didn't take that from the conversation, but if you did, um, I did ask her to give me Stephanie's telephone number, so, um, I will be in touch with Deep myself to find out just exactly what's going to happen.
I asked Amy, I said, "Will this be a cost to the town?" She said, I quote, "Absolutely." So, I, I do remember that. That wa- that was on the call.
I don't think it had anything to do with the fair going there.
It was with the, the two-two-two, two-thirty, those, those two properties and.
But that's, that was cleanup for two-two-two and two-thirty.
That's additional. That's also, there also is a, there also is the cleanup aspect of two-two-two. I just want everyone to be aware that there is a cost. I don't, it, is the fair going to do the, the cleanup of the brush at two-two-two?
Oh, yeah, I know you had asked that, and I. And what I had said even to Amy at the meeting was, if you go down there and you walk, the, the brown level dips in right here, so. The most that you're going to clear out of there before you fall off the edge is about five feet, that's it. So, the midway will fit in there even if you didn't clear any of that. So, yes, if the fair has to go in and clean back five feet, we'll do that. That's not a problem.
I have, I think, before we really go any further, um, we should find out if there is a cost, because it seems like you heard it, you didn't hear it, and what the cost, the potential cost could be, um, before we.
It would be the cost for Ty and Bond, is my understanding, of creating that soil disturbance, uh, plant. I mean, maybe, maybe, um, it is just a verbal agreement, but I, I don't think that's, is, is, uh, I think that might be, uh, wishful thinking, but who knows? But, and then the other thing.
Soil disturbance for the staking or for the trees?
Amy, so what Amy had said was that any time, right now, the two-two-two, two-thirty, the only approved use of that property is for parking. And so, any other additional use has to get approved by Deep in order for us, because it's a brownfield site. It has to get approved. And so, in order to get that approval, she's, she mentioned a, uh, soil, um, disturbance plan that we would have to come up with and, uh, and then issue to.
But then she asked, but then the conversation went to this map. So, she's taking this map up there to see what they say.
Okay.
Okay, she's talking to him and bringing the map with her. She asked for the map.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm just saying what we talked, I mean, that's what Amy had said on the call yesterday, but. Um, and then the, the other item that I want to just make sure, that we also talked about, was we don't know this plan, the plan that you're putting forward calls for the use of two-forty-eight Brownstone Avenue, which is, has not been remediated yet, and we do not have assurance that that property will even be completed by the time of the fair. I mean.
Two questions. I've asked her twice, Amy, and she said both times. First time, she said by the end of May it was going to be done at the presentation she made to you guys. And then at the meeting yesterday, I asked her again, and she says by October, everything will be done and they'll be out of there. So, that's what we're going on.
But, so in, in the span of, uh, a few weeks, we went from May to October.
No, she just said by your October fair date, they will be done. She didn't say they're going to finish in October, okay, so.
I'm just, I'm just saying for the, just for the sake of everyone here, that it's, uh, we don't know for certain when that property will be completed as of tonight. We, we hope that it's done. I, I certainly hope that it's done by May, but I just, I don't know if the board can, can promise something that we, we don't know if we'll have.
But as we just saw earlier, that he's asking for an extension on something because of delays and COVID. We don't know if there will be delays on this project either, where it could take us past October. There's no guarantees. I don't think Amy ever guaranteed that. She gave you dates, but there's just no guarantees that it could be done, is what I think Ryan's trying to say.
That's all I'm saying, yeah.
And my only question is, if, in a perfect world, if you get what you want here and everything you asked for, are you prepared for it just to be a one-year event there? Because we don't know what's going to happen after the fair. The neighbors might be complaining of the noise is too loud, or this and that, and it might get a lot of backlash of it being down there. So, I'm just saying, we, it could only be a one-year thing.
All right, let me say this, okay? Do we want to move from the Exchange Club grounds? No, we don't. There have been a whole lot of problems down there that all climaxed in two thousand twenty-one, and that's why we shut the fair down, okay? The plan is to eventually go back to the fairgrounds. As far as I am understanding, the Exchange Club is going to make an attempt to repair down there, okay? So, yeah, we understand. To, if this is approval for two thousand twenty-two, fine, we'll go for that right now. And then we'll have to deal with two thousand twenty-three and beyond afterwards, okay? We're trying to keep our expenses down just because of that. We don't want to put a fortune into this and then find out you can't do it.
It just seems to me like the, is the truck pulls necessary? I know it's the biggest draw, but it, it seems like the truck pulls might be, uh, causing the biggest problem of this whole thing. The noise, the, the property that we're talking about being remediated, the extra space you need.
The two draws to the fair, the biggest draws, what people come for, are the truck pull and the midway. You cut those out, may as well not have a fair.
Well, East Hampton does a pretty good job with their Old Homestead and Sis vendors.
No, they don't. Not, not, not like an agricultural fair.
No, I just, no, they break even, but we're just trying to, we're trying to sputt along until twenty, until two years or whatever it is.
What happens is, you've, we've lost two years now. You go in with a half of a fair, and people come to it, the following year, they won't come back.
What does the Exchange Club need to do at the fairgrounds? Like, what are, what are they trying to fix?
Let me give you some history down there, okay? The ground's sinking, number one. And why is that? It's because the state doesn't go out and maintain the streams that are out and back. The Beaver are damming it, diverting the water, and it's coming into the Exchange Club grounds. If you go down there and you look at that back fence, that used to be in dry ground. Now it's underwater, okay? The utilities, the utility fall went down, wires, our aluminum. We keep our fingers crossed every year that they're not going to melt, okay? The electrical system is antiquated, needs to be redone. Pole barn, long pole barn. In two thousand ten, it was condemned. If you go to the fair, you'll notice we don't put people in that pole barn, because since two thousand ten, it's been condemned, and they haven't done anything with it, okay? Then, on top of that, in two thousand nineteen, we let the game club charge and park cars on their property. They made ten thousand dollars. Now, what we have is every property owner around there wants a piece of the action, okay? They're all looking for money. Two owners, Jim Halas, George Purtle, they bought property directly around the Exchange Club property. They have said to us, "Do not go on our property unless you pay us." You add all that up, that is the reason why we can't go back to that fair until that's straightened out. There is a lot.
So, this might not be one year here, or it's just one year here and.
Somewhere else, right? We will continue to look.
Don, let me ask you, would you be able to have the fair here without two-forty-eight? Um, say, say it wasn't remediated by, by October, or say, another thing that could happen is say, keep in mind, that property and these parcels are intended for economic development for the town. So, we do have an RFP that will be going out, um, and say we do get a private partnership, uh, with a business in July that wants to come in, uh, and, and two-forty-eight is, is not an option. Would, would you still be able to hold the fair down here without two-forty-eight?
Ryan, answer. Answer me the question, and the questions I asked, uh, Amy, I, I was asking about that flood point back there. I asked all about the requirements. So, if you get a developer who wants to come in there, it isn't going to happen by October, I can tell you that. They're not going to get their permit.
But that, I'm, I'm just asking, but, but that's, I'm just asking, could you have the fair there without two-forty-eight? That's, that's my question.
Then we fall back to the squeeze the tents in, cut down some trees in the back so that we can do it. We lose the vendor parking, we lose the helicopter. Yes, we can.
You could do that, okay.
What's the location for the helicopter?
Right now, the helicopter would be in the parking lot. This parking lot right here, the grass generated on the end.
Oh, the upper, yeah.
Now, did we get that straightened out with, did the quorum and did the fair come to an agreement on the clearing to fit those tents?
No, the way it was left was Jim Tripp kept saying he can't visualize this. So, what we were going to do, Fran, was going to go in, clear the little brush in there, and we were going to stake it and show him exactly where the corners of all those tents would be. That's the way it was left.
So, what does the board think?
Well, I have concerns if we're getting charged by Ty and Bond, and we don't know what that, how much they're going to charge? I mean, are we willing to pay that upfront, or is the fair willing to come back if we give them a bill? Because that looks like that's the, the key thing in order for you to even have the fairs, and you need that midway on those two parcels.
Yep.
So, I will, I will say, I asked Amy if she had an estimate of the cost on the call yesterday, and she said, she did not have an estimate for the, um, time. So, I, I don't know what, what that cost would be. I know, I know any time we do work with Ty and Bond, it, it's not cheap. So, there is that.
Did she say if Deep will have an answer tomorrow, or she's just presenting it that on tomorrow?
She's presenting that tomorrow. The, the question is, do we need a plan, you know, a detail like that for a fair that's there for the weekend, and what we're talking about driving a stake on the ground and pulling it back out, what we're not? If Deep says, if Deep says no, it's okay, we don't need anything, then we're good. But I, I guess if, if you're going to clear trees and you've got to come up with a plan, then maybe that is a cost, but.
Parking is what she, she had told us. On a brown, anything, any, if, any type of use on a brownfield has to be approved by, by Deep. And so, right now, we have gotten approval to. And so right now, we have gotten approval to park cars on those properties, and that's why the Brownstone Exploration Park uses those lots to park cars in the summertime. But that's, that's the extent of our ability to use that property. If we were to have a fair or something, from what Amy had said, it should go, go to DEEP for approval.
If, if that's being presented to them tomorrow, is there any reason we can't wait till our next meeting, so we find out whether they would approve it and if there would be a fee?
The hassle to all this is, we belong to the Association of Connecticut Fairs, so by the end of January, we have to notify them where we're going to be, what we're putting on, do we have the helicopter, don't we have the helicopter, all of the details, that has to be submitted by the end of January.
If we decide at our next meeting, do you have enough time from the meeting to the end of January to give them everything?
Yeah, probably.
Because that's, that's our only concern is if.
It would have to be done by then.
Yeah, if, if.
Can't go on anymore.
And if there is a fee, how much the fee is, what's it going to cost?
Right.
So hopefully we'll know all of that before our next meeting.
Yep.
But Don, do you have any willingness, any backup plan, any willingness to, to scale back a little bit to make it happen? If this, if DEEP comes back with a negative response?
No, there is no place, there is no place to put them.
Is that the brownfields are grants that they offer to a lot of towns, not just us. And my thought would be, every inch that they give us, they're going to have to give everybody else. I, I don't have a good feeling that they're going to be that easy to, to allow this to happen.
Without the midway, it's not going to happen.
If you, if, if for the time being, you had to take the trucks, the truck pulls out of the area, could the midway fit where the truck pulls were going to go?
No, it's not big enough.
What's the, the main parking lot going to be used for?
Tents.
Tents and truck pulls, so you would have a hundred-foot tent right here, and another one going in this direction. People would be walking in on the road here, and truck pull would be back here towards the tree.
And what's over between the pavilion and the bathrooms, that, the volleyball court, that area? The flat?
If we, there's going to be a craft tent back there where the volleyball court was. If we move all of the tents back out, back and do it, he wanted to put three tents back there, so they'd all be, all three tents would be lined up side by side back there. Would leave some space here, but then, this is not available, so that means we have to park the sixty-two trucks that pull in there where the truck pulls it. So if you're, even if you had a, a truck pull pulled on an angle to get the three hundred feet in, the trucks are going to park on the other side, so that gets all taken up. So if the truck pull out of there.
I'm kind of looking at this like a chess game, do we, do you have a second move if, if DEEP comes back with problems?
No. Nope. Not here in Portland.
Hope I'm reading them wrong, but I, I don't think it's going to be a slam dunk. Could be, I could be wrong, but.
I guess we'll know more tomorrow, we should, and I can reach back out to Amy for, for additional clarification on, on what that would entail, what she was talking about as far as, you know, getting, getting information on the soil disturbance. But.
To eliminate two forty-eight, we could do that, okay, but to eliminate two twenty-two, two thirty, where the carnival or midway is going to go.
No, we can't.
Don, I was trying to remember that ride you're talking about that they stake. Do, do they, they, they stake the, literally stake it right to the ground?
Right, there are cables that go down and.
I was wondering, is there a way you could bring in some of those concrete blocks with hooks?
Well, my question, I mean, after what you just said, Ryan, it was like, most of what Coleman brings in, he just drives in and puts his pedestals down and sits there. I can say to Coleman, don't bring the wheel of, of fire in. Anything that you stake, don't bring it in, we could do that. It's, it makes the midway a little smaller.
That's why I asked, if, if you're bringing those cables down and staking them, if you could bring in those, those big concrete blocks with the eye hook in it and put a couple of those around it, would that be sufficient?
Yeah, I mean, there's ways around this, but the point is, is she going, is DEEP and is Amy going to say that those are not parking vehicles, that's, that's a midway, or are those considered vehicles and we're just parking them?
That's a good question.
I don't, that, I don't know.
I don't know either, right, and John, to your point, I, I'm more optimistic about two-two-two and two-thirty than I am about two forty-eight at the moment.
Which was the one that had the block of concrete that was PCB filled? The platform?
The platform?
Oh, two, two-thirty.
No, I thought it was the two forty-eight.
I think it's two forty, I think it's two forty-eight, two forty-eight is the one that has the, that's where.
Two forty-eight had the most.
That has, that's the most contamination, and that's also the source of our, that's our, supposed to be our economic driver here. We want to be careful with that.
We also have the platform on two-thirty.
That was the one that she said was raised up above.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
Leaving it there.
Because it had.
It's right there over that.
So, so nothing is being done with two-two-two and two-thirty with this current remediation plan, yeah, so, everything is focused on two forty-eight.
Yeah.
So.
So hopefully she comes back and says, yes, you're parking vehicles on it, and then you're.
I don't think that, we never, I know Ryan and I didn't specifically say that to her, is, are those considered vehicles, or?
We did not say.
Or is that midway, I mean, that, that part, we did not ask.
All, all we talked about was the usage of, we have approved for one type of use, and so. And she said, she did say, this is not something that you want to do, and then have DEEP find out about it? You know, you need to get, we need to go through the proper channel.
Absolutely.
And get approval. So. So maybe we have to revisit, revisit this at our next meeting, and I'll get more information.
Yeah, I'll talk to her too, I'm actually going to talk to DEEP myself, so, so I'll call them.
All right, thanks, Don, you know, we, we want the fair, and we want, we want to have the fair, and we just have to find a, a solution. We just want to make sure that we can't, that we, we give you property that we're allowed to, to use, that's all.
Yeah, I understand.
Thanks, Don.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So.
So do we need to make a motion or anything, or are we good?
No, we're, we're just going to, no motion tonight, so we'll table the resolution, we didn't introduce the resolution, so.
Table till next meeting.
Table till next meeting, yep. So, next up, our appointments to boards and commissions. There is, there is one, one appointment that I, I know of here tonight, and, and that is the to appoint an interim town clerk. So that, for those who don't know, the town clerk position was, when I was elected for selectman, I resigned my position as town clerk, which created a vacancy. And due to the Portland Town Charter, when there is a vacancy in the office of the town clerk, it goes to the party of which the person was elected from. So me being a Republican, the filling of that position went to the Republican Town Committee to fill that appointment. The process was, I believe, now, we have a, the Republican Town Committee has a nominating committee within, within their committee, within the town committee, and they put out a job posting, looking for qualified candidates for the position of town clerk, which would be normally the position's an elected position. And this term would be from, from now until the next municipal election in twenty twenty-three. So I believe the town committee received three or four candidates for the position, and they held interviews, and there was a candidate who they felt was, was the best candidate out of those that they interviewed. And on Monday night, the town committee voted unanimously to recommend that, that individual for our endorsement at tonight's meeting. So that individual here is Michael Tierney. I've, you know, I've personally known Michael for, for many years, he's been involved with the Boy Scout Troop Two, he's been a scout master. He, you might have seen his, his trains at the Cellar Savers over the years. You might have seen him most recently at the tree lighting as Santa Claus, so. Actually, I, I think we have, we have two, we have two Santas in the house tonight.
I hope no kids are watching.
I think it's past.
It's past his bedtime.
So, so I know Michael is, very, very much impressed the, the town committee with his experience in town, his, his background, his resume, and so, so I, I believe, and I'll let someone, if someone would like to make a nomination for Michael, now we can, we can put it forward.
Sure, I'll make the nomination.
Thank you, Bobby, for a second.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, John, so any, any discussion on Michael?
I just want to know if the Order of the Arrow is going to be involved too? I've known, I've known Mike through Boy Scouts for years, he's a great, great guy, so I'm, I'm very happy with this election.
I, I think, I think we have a, a good town clerk here, a future town clerk, so there's no other discussion? We'll entertain the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, congratulations, Michael. Any other appointments, boards and commissioners?
Okay, get to work, Mike.
Any other appointments, I don't think.
I only had one item to bring up. Obviously, you know, some of us were at the Water and Sewer Commission meeting the other night, and I was hoping to add my name as a liaison.
Oh.
Given that I've been involved with the water for the last four years.
And we, yeah, we can do that, and I, we don't need to vote on it.
I just wanted to bring, I know we don't have to vote on it, we just wanted to raise it so people were aware of it because, you know, I'll be interested.
And so, okay, so. So we have, just right now, that's, I, I think that's too many, because we have Mike Pelton, we have Mike Hernandez, no, you're not a?
Nope, I just went.
You just went, okay, so then Sean, Sean can be a liaison. Now, just keep in mind that the, the purpose of a liaison is to attend the meeting and then to come to the Board of Selectmen and report on the activity of, of what went on. So I know Water and Sewer is a, is a big topic for, for all of us on this board, and so I think that it's important that we all stay in the loop on, on what's going on with that committee and our own work. But you don't have to be necessarily a liaison to do so, but I think having three, that said, having three is, is a good thing. So, so we'll have Ralph, Sean, and, and Mike, and Mike Pelton on. All right, great, and then with no other appointments, we can move on to refunds of excess payment. Does someone want to read through these?
All right. Refund of excess payments, Vault Trust, four hundred and six dollars and ten cents, and five hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-two cents.
Ralph will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion passes.
CCAP Auto Lease Limited, ninety-four dollars and ninety-eight cents, and a second payment of ninety-four dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Ralph will second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion passes.
Carrier Jonathan B., two thousand one hundred and nine dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Ralph, go ahead, go ahead.
John, John will second that.
All those in favor? Any opposed, any abstention, motion passes.
Enterprise FM Trust, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Ralph will second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion passes.
Graham Peter, hundred and forty-three dollars and two cents, eighty dollars and eighteen cents.
And Ralph will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion passes. All right, moving on to status reports, anyone have status reports?
It's not, it's not a status report, but I would just like to thank the emergency management, whoever the folks were that volunteered the other day to hand out the masks and the test kits, I think that was, that was great, and I truly appreciate it.
Thank you, John, yeah, that's Don Guin, and Bob Shea was involved with the, the Fire Department, all of our, our SER team, our Police Department, every, you know, our Fire Department, everyone stepped up for that.
I've, I've heard at work from a lot of different municipalities, and it, big or small, it sounds like ours went probably the smoothest of anybody, so.
It's very, it was very well done, and, and we might be doing it again, who knows? So I'll just, I have a couple updates I just want to give. We, I'm not sure if the entire board is aware, but we did, we are losing our building official at Town Hall. Lincoln White has submitted his resignation, and his last day is this Friday. So a job has been posted for a building official, and we're currently working to get a, a part-time building official to fill some of the duties during this time. I, I'm hopeful to have more news to report on that for our next meeting, but I don't have anything else to share on that at this time. And so, yeah, as John said, we had a great test kit distribution, that was on Sunday, we might be doing that again. Rick Sharr had, had emailed me about him and, and Lou Pear are looking to possibly, the search for riverfront access for us, for the town continues. This is something that I know that Rick and Lou have been very passionate, when they were on the board, working towards, and now that they're off the board, they're still working to try to get us some type of, of riverfront access. So they're asking for the board to consider a possible river access steering committee, something along the lines of, you know, what the airline trail did to get going. They're looking at, they're currently looking at the property that is, that was Tomaso Field, and, and trying to get access to the town property that runs along the river there. So I believe Susan had reached out to the CEO of, of Tomaso. I have not heard any contact, so I might reach out and introduce myself and see if I can't get the ball rolling on that.
I thought they were talking about a right-of-way going through their property to ours.
That's correct.
Right-of-way down the.
To our own property.
The roadside of it. Yeah, she hadn't heard, because I think on the la, her last meeting, she actually brought up and said, I hadn't yet heard back from them, so. Might be good for you to reach out to them.
I think so, I just want to give an update, there's a, there's a bridge at, at the Portland Reservoir that's been out for, for some time. I think it got flooded with a Beaver Dam of some kind, and so this was something that I think Jim Siperly was working with Nate Foley on, and Butler Construction actually has volunteered to help fix this issue. And so there's a meeting on January thirteenth out at the, at the Portland Reservoir, and they're going to be reassessing this footbridge, and I plan to attend that, I think, you know, getting that trail back.
What time?
What time?
You know what, I don't, I can get you the, sorry, I didn't, I didn't put the time of the meeting in my notes.
What was the date of it?
Uh, it's January thirteenth, yeah. Uh, it's January thirteenth, yeah. I can get you that, that, uh, time, though, it's, it's during the day, uh, obviously. Um, uh, other updates to report, um, we are moving forward, I just wanna touch briefly on the RFQ that's going on with, uh, our Water Department, or, uh, Water, the search for, um, a company to look for a water source. We had eight, uh, requests for qualifications come back, and we identified four, um, four, uh, companies on a shortlist, uh, to, to move forward with to the next phase, so, um, I just wanna keep you guys in the loop on that, um, and as we move on. And that's all, that's all I have.
Um, the one thing I would want to see, have we heard what the punch list is for the new park? I know there's been issues about us taking full ownership of it.
Yeah, and, and there were some exchanges between Nate Foley and the engineering firm, and as, with the developer as well. And a couple of the items that Nate had thought were still in play were, were, were completed.
Okay.
So, um, I know I've asked Nate a couple of times now to make sure and verify, um, if there was anything outstanding. I did, there was a couple items that are, there's like, uh, the panel for the splash pad, the panel to interact with it, and it has to be replaced, but we were advised you shouldn't really replace, you shouldn't have replaced it this year, because you'd wanna wait till next year. So there's a few things that just have to be documented, to just say, listen, this is what's gonna happen in the spring, and I, I don't know, well, on Monday is their, uh, is the parking rec meeting, so, we didn't have the meeting yet for this month, so, um, I'm sure I'll be following up with him on that. But that's, that's what I understood, was some of the items were completed, there was a couple items that probably would just be waiting to the spring, and all you wanna do is document it to make sure that they're gonna come back and actually do it.
Yeah, I know, I know Nate's aware that, uh, you know, we wanna close out this project, and, um, and hopefully we'll be able to get that, uh, soon. Any other, uh, status reports? All right, public comment?
Did you have a comment about the one point one million? I came tonight to learn. Now, Tom said that it was a large portion of the rescue plan for the water and sewer. So, I thought it was, the funds were designated for a different purpose, now we're moving it over to water and sewer? So, if there's already earmarked for water and sewer, why did we need a public hearing?
You wanna explain, Dave?
So, to answer that question, there, you know, money wasn't earmarked yet for anything, but it's one of the allowable uses is to do it for water and sewer, so, we wanted to, you, through a public hearing, to let people have a ability or a voice to discern if they have a concern or an issue in the organization of those funds. Uh, that, that was what we did today, and then there was a move forward to the resolution, so that we have authorization and to extend it.
Thank you. Now, they, so it's allowable use, I missed, I put my comment down earlier. I just came off the water and sewer commission, and for month after month, we always try to keep an eye on the water and sewer budget and the issues. That's why I really was concerned there. And the slide presentation that was done by Bob Shea was superb. It shows the great need of how far we're behind in Portland in our water and sewer infrastructure. We are so far behind. I know we fight every year at budget time for funds. I believe our water and sewer budgets ended up in a deficit again, operating deficit for this year, with the last fiscal year. So now it's like five years, and we're still in the deficit. And we have to somehow come up with funds and at least get a yearly operating portion in the back, because we never can do improvements. Thank God we got this fund of a million dollars to use on stuff that's critical. But how are we gonna move forward if this is the Band-Aid fits? But how are we gonna move in the future if we can't control or come up with getting us out of a deficit balance on the water and sewer from year to year? I know we worked on a water race a lot, that was a big push, and the board set up a subcommittee, we worked well together, but they hadn't had a water rate in four years. How do we plan on moving in the future when we don't have a water rate for four years in a row? And then we only went up fourth and three percent. I'm just saying, we had a serious problem, and that showed it tonight even more so. We got a new board, start fresh. I'm looking for a lot of great work for me, and I think we are moving in the right direction. We have a big problem, and I think we saw it tonight. If we all work together like we talked about before, that's what we need to do, because we do have a major problem there for water and sewer. The taxpayers the other year with the town park, we approved a million and a half for water and sewer infrastructure that the general taxpayers paid for, or will pay for, and that went for the water main replacement on Spring Street. So that's what I mentioned earlier, I hate to see this million one go to private residential water and sewer replacements. Overall, that's not how, it's helping the water customers out, but it's not helping out the overall town, I don't think. My here fire protection, we get all that to consider too. And that's why I mentioned that infrastructure, that we're looking at for a new program with the new meters. The initial cost is only over a million. So I thought, that's why I mentioned earlier, this would be a great place for some of that money to go. Just the replacement of the meters is six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Norm.
Thanks, man.
Excellent. Any other public comments? Any in the chat, Dave?
Elwin, do you wanna, you wanna talk, there it is.
There I am. Hi, Ryan.
Hi, Elwin.
Wanted to take a minute just to inform the, the board of the, in front of you satisfying reading I had yesterday afternoon with, with Ryan Farley. Sometime back I had asked for a limitation and communion, have an opportunity to share my views with economic development, or lose my experience with economic development in the department, and, um, he was very gracious, and we had a, I think, a very productive afternoon. I'm, I'm certain he'll be sharing some ideas and advices that I provided to him, but, um, I wanted to compliment Ryan on his, uh, looking into our policy and, uh, very, um, welcoming and listening, uh, here. One thing that I think, um, I'll bring to your attention that I wanted to mention to all of you is the significance of the Route sixty-six corridor thing that was funded by River Cog for the benefit of Portland and Stanton. Uh, I think that, uh, the final report, which has been available for quite some time, is, uh, is available all of you as a link on the River Cog website. But it's a very, very, very significant, um, issue that is going to occupy, I'm sure, the, the focus and time of the town fathers, uh, near and distant future as well. It's a, it's a very important strategic, I mean, uh, instrument that needs your awareness and, uh, ultimately your attention, so. Ryan, I'm just saying thank you, and, uh, thank you to the board, wonderful meeting tonight. Night.
Thank you, Elwin. Yes, that, that plan, uh, that Elwin's referring to is available on the River Cog's website, um, it was done, uh, a few years ago, um, but, uh, so I, I encourage everyone to take a look at that, um, it's a good plan to take a look at. Any other public comment? All right, move on to general discussion, informal discussion, the Board of Selectmen, does anyone have anything to discuss? All right, we can move on to, um, follow-up items. Um, I guess I'll just ask if the board, um, has any interest in reviewing the Town Charter? Uh, does this board, um, we don't have to decide tonight or anything, but it is a follow-up item, and it's been a, a follow-up item for years, for, for a long, you know, for, for many meetings, so, um, it, you know, maybe, maybe at a future meeting, we can discuss it, um, you know, there hasn't, there hasn't been a, a charter, uh, change in, uh, quite some time, so maybe it's time to take a look at it? I don't know, I'll, you know, if you guys wanna think about it and get back to me, we can talk about that.
I do have a question with regards, it's not necessarily a charter, but I know that Bob and I were having a conversation, um, the other night with regards to some of the, um, the limits that we have in terms of, uh, when we're putting out and, and spending, looking to spend money, what, what limits dollar amounts kick in additional requirements for processing? So, um, I don't know what is involved with wanting to make, um, changes to those dollar amounts, but I think it's something we may wanna take a look at.
I think that is in the charter, yeah. Right, correct, Tom? I thi, it, that is, and, and the charter specifies how much, uh, if we're going out to bond, uh, if we have to have a town meeting, or what the threshold is for all that, exactly. Yep, so, is that what you're referring to, Ralph?
Well, by, in general, I mean, I know with bonding, obviously, but any toward a bidding that you have, or other, any sort of expenses, I mean, there's other val, there's other numbers as well, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah, correct, yep.
I think so, that's something that we probably should take a look at.
Okay. All right, so, uh, with no other, uh, follow-up items, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion adjourn.
Sean made the motion.
I'll second it.
And Bobby, he seconded that, thank you, Bobby, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.